Okay. Good morning, everyone. It is the 10 o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, August the 9th, 2022. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all of the special assessment and taxing districts for which said boards so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So at this time, Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Mastin?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
Here.
I'll make note that Supervisor Short is absent.
Thank you. Now, we're going to take a moment of reflection. Now, if you'll all stand, Supervisor Starkey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Introduction to new employees.
Yes, Chair, we have four from the Department of Health and Human Services today.
Right on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have four new employees we wanted to introduce. I also have the program managers here, Crystal Nielsen from Social Services and Dorothy Wadlow from our Public Assistance team that are going to introduce their staff.
Good.
Good morning, Board members. I'm Dorothy Wadlow from the Public Assistance Branch at the Department of Health and Human Services. I would like to introduce the staff in my branch, Zara Pinger, Eric Oshel, and Jasmine Perry.
Welcome.
And they each want to say just a short thing.
Great. Please, come up.
Good morning. I'm Zara Pinger. I relocated here from Contra Costa County. Previously worked for the Department of Motor Vehicles here, so I'm looking forward to serving our county here.
Great. Thank you and welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Eric Oshel. I'm a Health and Human Services working with the training team as an eligibility specialist. I come here from, most recently, Florence, Oregon. I was very active in the community there and look forward to building community here.
Great. Welcome. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jasmine. I am also an eligibility specialist within the last month. I grew up in Reading and then I've been between here and Humboldt for the last eight years or so, and I'm looking forward to giving back to my community here.
Great. Thanks. Welcome.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Crystal Nielsen, and I'm going to introduce Jane Morning to our Adult Services team, working as a social worker. So she would like to say a little bit more about her background. Welcome, Jane.
Good morning. I'm Jane Morning. I've been in the community for about 18 years, working with the developmentally disabled for 14 and helping them, and now I'm here to help with the community more.
Great. Thanks. Welcome. Thanks. Is that it for new employees? Okay. Thank you. County Council, you got any actions to report from closed session?
Not today, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to have brief reports now from county supervisors on projects, progress of two-by-two committees, goal committees, board staff, traveling, whatever. We're going to start with Supervisor Mastin.
Thank you. I want to report that we're following ... Ah, sorry. So I met with the California Endowment Foundation regarding the National State Parks Outdoor School and Community Engagement, participated in Senator McGuire's Town Hall Last Chance Grade Meeting, and then also conducted a town hall meeting with Sheriff Scott in the Ocean Birch Track area where we talked about Neighborhood Watch. He gave an update of his activities since taking office. We talked about the Reserve's Mental Health Crisis Response Team, Homeless Camp, and Mission Possible. So it was a great meeting and thank the sheriff for attending that town hall. Held the second Tourism Enhancement Economic Development Collaboration Meeting along with the celebration of the Front Street Project and an update for the next phase. Participated in the undersheriff interviews, met with Delmar Ambulance regarding the benefits of the EOA, attended a National Women's Conference and the boat races in Klamath, met with Amber Weir regarding the tobacco retail policies, working on the cellular issues in Birch Track and in the Glen in Klamath, met with constituencies regarding roads and brushing and the boat docks in Klamath, as well as the homeless camp issues. Did some follow-up with staff on those issues. Also had the, a great opportunity to attend the Delmar County Fair where I've got to witness the wonderful presentation and hard work of our youth in their livestock and the raising of their animals and their showmanship and the marketing and the auction part. And yes, I ended up buying a pig. So did support the youth, and it was wonderful to see how individuals and businesses came together to support the youth this year. And they bid high, and it was wonderful to be able to see them do that and provide for that opportunity for the youth at this time, especially after a couple of years of not having been able to hold the fair activity. So it was a great opportunity to be there. And that'll do it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Starkey?
Thank you, Chair. Over the last couple of weeks, I attended a Healthy Families, Healthy Babies Work Group, and it's a collaboration of agencies that are focused on providing new families with services that they need. The emphasis is on this particular meeting that I attended is on maternal mental health and the importance of having ways in which we can check in with new moms postpartum. I met with Laurel Arroyo. She is a state public defender, and she was up here looking for ways in which we can improve services to the indigent offenders and also look for ways in which we can streamline services here so that we can have some better outcomes with regard to rehabilitation. I attended the bi-monthly local behavioral health board meeting, received an update on 988, which is the new national hotline. So if you are in crisis, you can just call 988 instead of the long 1-800 number. This 988 will automatically transfer you to the suicide prevention hotline. I received, we received at that same meeting, an update on the after-hour calls, and it has reduced somewhat significantly. But, so it's always good to kind of see that information and make sure that it's still being provided, so after-hours for individuals that need assistance. Now, we did announce two new board members to our board. They are filled the two consumer positions, and we discussed the data notebook and how to provide the information so that staff can accumulate the data to report. I attended a city council meeting. I attended the annual law enforcement night out event that was organized by Chief Griffin. It was, all the local agencies were there. I was so proud to see Delmar Sheriff's Department there, Sheriff Scott and his crew. Delmar Ambulance was there, Fish and Game, Pelican Bay was there. Seaquake provided all the hot dogs and hamburgers for free, so everybody that attended the event was able to eat, and it was just really well-attended and a really nice event. So Sheriff Scott, thank you for being there for that. I attended the yearly CAPC luncheon, and that is the Child Abuse Prevention Council, and we discussed some of the events that they've done in the last year and what was successful, what was not, and how they can take some opportunities for what they can do in the future to, again, promote child abuse prevention. I had a E3 debriefing. We hired those folks from the schools for the E3 program, and so the departments who participated, we all got together and kind of brainstormed on what really was successful, what was not successful. Are we wanting to do this again in the future? What could we do to improve our involvement? And so that was a really good discussion. As with Supervisor Mastin, I did attend the Delmar County Fair, and I helped with the Bucket Calf Show. It is my favorite event of the entire year. And I just want to just shout out to the Alexander family, who have done this Bucket Calf Show program for over 20 years, and they do it for free of cost. It's their time. They invite people to come out to their dairy, and they teach kids about how to handle calves, and then the kids get a chance to show their calves. So, and I just want to say that their oldest daughter Vanessa and her husband welcomed a new baby girl, and they named her Jora, and Jora means farmer. And so it's just very, very fitting. I continue to work on some issues with the constituents who are face, are having difficulties in the Preston Island area. We are setting up a meeting with those residents for August 27th at 11:00 a.m. I sent out flyers to them, but the public is welcome. And finally, I just want to wish a very happy birthday to Kylie Goffnor, who turned a good age yesterday, and we appreciate all the work that you do for us, Kylie.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Happy birthday, Kylie.
Happy birthday, Kylie.
Attended a senior center board meeting, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and also had some extensive conversations that I hope to engage both the city, the harbor, and members of this board in with Keith Taylor. He's with the University of California Cooperative Extension. He's an economic development specialist, and he'll help craft the incoming position that will be going out and hiring here quite soon and will be located here in Delmar County, but hoping when he's here the week of the 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, that our board members can spend some time with him. He's UC's top dog in economic development for the state. I want to congratulate Aaron Babcock for his success in getting the AIM grant for the Gasky community, both fuels reduction programs and the immediate vicinity of that community, and then also working with Randy Hooper in securing the payment in lieu of taxes data from the state for Delmar County. Seems to be quite a few holes, and I'm hoping Randy, along with work for the, with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, could help them update their database to accurately reflect those parcels owned by the state and Delmar County. Maybe we could work on some other county information, too, that might be lacking. Also want to congratulate James Gore for getting the second vice president position of NACO. James, for those of you don't know, is a Sonoma County Supervisor, has been extremely active in RCRC and CSAC and has moved to a top position within the National Association of Counties, and congratulations to you, to you, James. And then want to thank OES for keeping us posted on the efforts to clean up the tar spill in the Smith River. They've done an incredible job, and thank you, Mia, for staying on top of that. And then addressing multiple constituent concerns as it relates to vacation rentals in our region and, in addition, code violations. Appreciate Dominique Mello's attention to this and also community development department staff in helping to keep a surprise of everything going on in this area, including those efforts that are ongoing continuously around the Prince Road area at the end of Parkway, which has been a continuous headache for quite some period of time, but really appreciate Dominique Mello's work there. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Well, I had a few things going on. I attended via Zoom Golden State Natural Resources meeting. They're continuing to give updates on their progress with their projects. As Supervisor Starkey said, Laurel Arroyo from the Office of the State Public Defender's Office was here, had a meeting with her. She had some great information and statistics as far as Delmar County, and hopefully we can improve those with some efficiencies that she's suggesting. So hopefully, we can move forward with that. On a personal note, I participated in the member guest golf tournament out at the Delmar Golf Course. There's new ownership out there. It's nice to see that establishment continue on, so hopefully it does well. I did a gender review, had a coastal counties, I'm a co-chair on Coastal Counties panel for CSAC. We had a prep call on sea level rise. We're meeting with the Coastal Commission coming up, and so we kind of got together with a kind of a preview of what's going to happen there. As Supervisor Howard mentioned, we had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. Supervisor Howard and I also met with Sandra Jaravec about invasive species, grass pulling out at the dunes. Not many concerns with that. We like to see that going on, but not particularly sure that that's where our money needs to be spent. But anyway, that's moving forward. And I attended the Delmar County Fair with my grandkids and family and watched the Bowls and Barrels, or Barrels and Bowls, whichever it is. And that's about it for me. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
And I will second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
Chair, I have one online. Brandon, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for the time. This is Brandon Bieber, Smith River resident. You'd have questioned the use of the consent agenda. Today, you've got four more things for DHHS. County recently provided all the contract agreements that DHHS currently engaged in. It's like 12 pages, like 140 contracts, a lot of duplicate services, almost stating the exact same thing on some. So asking that you please consider the consequences of just funneling money, ask that you use economic discretion, trust responsibility, and act on behalf of your constituents, not on behalf of the governor, not on behalf of all the county employees, but that you act on behalf of your constituents. When will a consent agenda item ever get not approved? You're doing a great disservice to the process. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
I do not have any more online, Chair.
Okay. Seeing no more public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Questions or comments? Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to budget transfers. We have budget transfer 808-01 in the amount of $35,950, $50 within the building maintenance budget, and we have a $2 million, or 08-03 in the amount of $2,107,556 within public safety, realignment, 2011 realignment budget unit to reimburse DHSS, and we have 08-05 in the amount of $74,169 within the Stimpson Mitigation Budget Fund.
I will move to approve those three budget transfers.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment on these budget transfers? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Questions, comments? Kylie, please poll the vote.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to item number 17. Introduce and read by title only in ordinance recoding Delmar County Code Title 14, Chapter 16, Vault Privies as requested by the Director of Community Development. Heidi, did you want to speak to this?
Yes. Good morning, Board. This is...
It's pretty self-explanatory.
It is. Unfortunately, we had two chapters to amend in Title 14 going at the same time, and unfortunately labeled them the same number. So this will clear that up. We'll be reassigning the chapter for the VIVI Vault Toilet Privies to another number, so it will not conflict with the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station chapter.
Thank you.
A little tip, Ruth.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we'll go right to number 18 then. Approve and authorize the temporary closure of Ocean View Drive from Spyglass Road to Fort 14800 Ocean View Drive for one weekday between the dates of August 10th to August 25th to replace a culvert.
Good morning, again. This one is also very self-explanatory, and we felt because it's, you know, it's a fairly well-traveled route that providing advance notice and getting the, obviously, the board's approval was prudent. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay.
Just the one question. How are you going to notify the advance notice? Are you going to put signs up right there on the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, perfect. That's, I just, I just wanted to make sure that a lot of times our five viewers don't really understand that we're doing this. So if you're going to put it out to a larger audience, it'd be great.
Yes, we have the reader boards and signage.
Excellent. So with that, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we are going to move on to item number 24, which is to authorize the purchase of a diamond mower, 60-inch broom rotary mower attachment at a price not to exceed $16,500.
Yes, our Rose Division is in need of this attachment to our mower. It'll help us to be more efficient when we're doing some of our routine maintenance, specifically down at the Klamath Glen Lovee. And due to the length of time it takes to procure items, we're requesting to be able to purchase this item prior to the adoption of the final budget.
Make the motion.
Okay, you have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. I think we're going to take up item number 25 also, which is another authorizing, having the board authorize, community development departments, Environmental Health Division purchased a 2023 Ford F-150 Supercrew four-by-four pickup prior to the adoption of fiscal year 2022.
Yes. Very similar situation to the mower attachment. In this case, it's even more prevalent or important for us to get the order in because the low bidder or the low quotation, the actual vendor needs to receive authorization from us, a purchase order today, tomorrow, in order to be able to get on the list, in order to be able to acquire it sooner than later.
Okay. The only question that I have is the pickup and a crew cab, is that for environmental health? Is that something that they carry a lot of equipment around in?
They've never had one, so I can't answer that question. I believe that the goal is to acquire equipment related to hazardous materials cleanups, and that will, they also plan to acquire that. So yes, they would need additional...
Right. And that was, that was my only question, because I didn't really, I couldn't really see the need to have a pickup, but if they're needing to haul around equipment, then that makes sense. Thank you.
And if you could just clarify, if I could, this is being purchased with an environmental protection grant?
Yes, 100% with a grant.
And it's replacing what it...
The 2007.
So that's like a 14-year-old vehicle. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, please poll the vote.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to go back to our 1025 timed item, which is public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. We will limit you to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Mr. Raymond?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Late yesterday, I received an email from the Chiefs Association regarding AB 503, requesting opposition to that expressed by myself and the other chiefs in the state. Just to lay some background, AB 503 addresses the length of probation for juvenile offenders. And the language in Section 1 of that piece of legislation lays the groundwork for how Assemblymember Stone, who we've actually worked well with in the past, is perceiving probation's role in criminal justice and juvenile proceedings. And I'd like to read a portion of that. He talks about probation's involvement and youth involvement with the criminal justice system, compounding trauma, exacerbating mental health problems, interfering with healthy development, increasing recidivism, and being counterproductive as a means of achieving public health and safety. He also encourages this bill to be passed as a means of creating a public health focus and not a correctional model focus. And later on, he also states that the bill's purpose is aiming to connect youth and their families with resources in their community without the harms of the justice system. In essence, what this bill does is it requires that when a court adjudicates a minor in criminal proceedings, that it limit the term of that supervision to six months. Built into that, there's a presumption that the youth would be discharged from supervision at the end of six months without another hearing, a follow-up hearing. This applies to all criminal offenses. Felonies and misdemeanors, rapes, murders, sex offenses. It does not differentiate in any way what those criminal offenses might be. There's also concerns regarding the timing of this. This is a, this would be a sweeping change in juvenile justice. And this is on top of the administration and the legislature's dissolution of Department of Juvenile, or Division of Juvenile Justice and the shifting of all responsibilities to the counties in housing the most serious of our juvenile offenders. And lastly, it creates a disparity between what is already in statute regarding deferred entry of judgment and formal probation. A DJ adjudication by the court lasts 12 months. Formal probation in these cases would only last six with a presumption of termination. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. I'll be drafting a letter and sending it to our senator and assemblymen asking for their opposition to it.
Appreciate that, Lonnie. Thanks for your heads up.
Mr. Chairman, Lonnie, before you're excused, the, you sent out this information via email to the board here recently. I haven't had time to react to it. Do we have time as a board to correspond amongst the board, come up with a position to send? Or is there limited time? Is it still in committee?
It's still in committee. Last action, currently, it's in the Senate. It passed out of the Assembly in April of last year. This is a two-year bill. And so it was picked up again currently in committee in the Senate. I believe, if I recall correctly, there were amendments, and so it would have to go back to the Assembly for final ratification. But I do believe there would be time if the board chose to.
So there is time to put it on our next agenda?
Yes. As well as the Care Court bill as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't, this is the first I feel like I'm hearing of this. I just looked at my emails and you sent us something about Care Court, but I don't recall hearing about this. And I think that there probably is a lot that we need to have them clear up before we, you know, before it gets approved. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Absolutely.
Is there any other public comment?
I have one online, Chair.
Is there any more public comment here? Okay, go ahead, Kylie.
Brandon, you're on, you just need to unmute your mic.
All right, thank you again, Board of Supervisors. I'd like to probably start by just expressing my, say that I'm sorry for anything disrespectful I may have said about this board. I've been watching you now for the last eight months. And to say I'm disappointed is an understatement. But I guess what I'd like to know today is, as an employee of the state, and I've talked to Board of Supervisors short about this without a good answer, but Pelican Bay, it seems, a reduction in inmates by about like 22%, where the rest of the state has seen about 2%. Just wondering if the board has been contacted or if there's been any discussion about the institution closing? I understand infrastructure projects have been put on hold. Work orders aren't getting done or have been canceled. So has there been any correspondence? Has the state said anything? Is the county prepared if Pelican Bay does close? If you could give any insight into that, I would appreciate it.
Are you done, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I have no insight. Any other, any other public comment, Kylie? Any, no other public comment here? Okay, we will move on to our 1030 timed item, which is to review and discuss the Delmarck County Treasurers Report. Welcome, Barbara.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Barbara Lopez, Delmarck County Treasurer, and this is my quarterly report for our fiscal year ending June 30th, '22. We ended the year with a very large portfolio. It closed out at $99,561,151. About 45% of that is our government agency bonds, which are a little over 45 million. I have about 12% of the portfolio in CDs, about $12.4 million. LEAF, we're at 33%, about 34%, with $33 million in LEAF, which is our liquid account. And then our mitigation funds starting to creep up a little bit as Bakra makes her payments. We have $3 million in our mitigation fund. So for this quarter, I decided to reopen Camp, which is another liquid account that my predecessor had opened, gosh, probably 15, 16 years ago. Wasn't earning very much interest. But recently, it's picked up and it's actually more than LEAF is. So I decided to put a couple million bucks in there and just, you know, use it as another liquid option. If I see it creep up even more, I think I'm going to kind of move some more money out of LEAF just to give us a little bit more interest since LEAF is always kind of lagging in that market. I did purchase some shorter yield maturities this quarter, two and three-year. Oddly, those are better rates than the five-years. So it actually really made that maturity distribution look a lot better. I've had some holes in my shorter terms and I wanted to fill those. So when I saw those rates pick up, I definitely was aggressive and picked up some of those since we do have so much in LEAF. And then just, I wanted you guys to see that our portfolio has doubled in the last two years. I'm not changing my philosophy on how I invest. It's just really interesting and it's happening all over the state. We kind of talk about that a lot. But it's, I'm still using that liquid, you know, philosophy. I want to make sure if we do end up needing to spend the money, that we have it. But it's just kind of surprising when I take a look back at statistics. With that said, our interest is picking up again. You know, markets are getting better and we have some more interest that we're earning, which is great because it was starting to lag a little. And hate to see that since I've been working really hard to try to get us more interest. So yeah, we had $204,000 this quarter and I anticipate probably closer to $250 next quarter. That said, Cal Trust is about 1.13%. LEAF, you can see, is really low at 86 basis points. And this is where I thought Camp was a good option. It's not huge, but for a liquid account, I think it's pretty, pretty good. I decided to throw in, just for your reference, what August 1st rates were for CDs and agencies. And you can see how the three-year and the four-years are pretty, pretty great. And considering the five-year, it's not much of a difference. I thought, let's just do some shorter-term options. And then over in the, the, I always like to put the term in years just so you can see like how many years out I am on agencies and CDs. And then weighting that against the LEAF portfolio, or the LEAF really knocks that down. But I'm, you know, really trying to keep it under four years. I think that's the best option, not knowing the market. And then, gosh, sorry, this one was really long, but I'd like you to see just kind of what activity happened for the quarter. We just have had so much money coming in and I didn't see a need to just park it in LEAF. So I was kind of aggressive this quarter. And luckily, some of our maturities that we had were pretty similar to what I purchased. Nothing worse than having a five-year maturity and then having to buy something that's half the price. That's always kind of a bummer. And then for cash flow, yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty crazy. June, June, the last two years have been really high. We haven't seen really negative cash flows quarterly in some time. And then for our fiscal year ending, you can just see that's why our portfolio has doubled. $29 million in a positive cash flow. And then again, $20 million for this last quarter. But we'll see how it goes for this year. I know we haven't been spending as much because everything's been sort of, not closed necessarily, but just, you know, things are a little bit different right now. But again, my goal is to make sure we have enough money in case we do need to spend a lot. Hopefully, no state IOUs come down. I can't imagine that, but always want to be prepared. So that's what I got for the quarter.
Any questions for Board members?
Yeah, Barbara, I know you don't normally report on this, but do you have a year-end TOT receipt?
Oh, gosh. So it's going to be large. I think I'm going to go over $700,000 this year. We're still getting some last quarter money coming in. I can, if you're interested, I'm happy to do sort of a statistical review if that's of interest to everybody. Map out sort of the locations of different places without getting, you know, there's obviously like privacy and whatnot, but I'm happy to do some stats. I know we get that from, I think we have a company that comes in and reports on that. But if you like something more detailed, I'm happy to do that.
Well, you know, and this is, this could basically be tied in with the economic development conversation. But I know we've worked as a county for decades getting this location on the map. Those fruits are bearing at this point. We're seeing it reflected in our County General Fund, especially through the.
Absolutely.
TOT receipts. Maybe that's an appropriate conversation in the summer, combined with a chamber discussion.
Yeah, we have, we've definitely seen an increase, but it's not as outrageous as some people have been expressing. I also want to keep, everyone to keep in mind that the price of an Airbnb is doubled, right? So that's going to correlate to how much revenue we're getting. Used to be 150 bucks a night for a beach house. Now it's 500. And it's just kind of what everyone's willing to pay. But yeah, I'm happy to give you kind of an idea of how many, 10 years ago versus this year, whatever you'd like. So I could reach out and you can let me know what you'd like to see.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
That'd be good to have some sort of comparison.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. As always, great job. Okay, so now we'll move back to our agenda that I've certainly jumped all over the place. Let's go to item number 22, which is to discuss and take possible action to add or carry forward $50,000 designated for road improvements on non-county maintained roads to the fiscal 2223 general fund budget as requested by Supervisor Starkey and Mastin. I don't know who wants to start.
I can go ahead and start. So this was in the budget. It's been in the budget for the past two years and it was recently taken out. There's been some discussion by myself and Supervisor Mastin. I don't know why it was put in there. I believe that the former CAO had put it in there at the request of Supervisor Berkowitz. And so it kind of just sat there. When I attempted to use it for something, there was some confusion as to how we could use it and why we could use it. But we've had some guidance from County Council who said that there would be no reason why we could not use it for county maintained roads. So it is now out of the budget. I'd like to see it placed back into the budget. Is that how I word that? Okay, so that is, that is the request at this point.
Well, and I really appreciate this reconsideration because there are a number of roads in my district that are not county roads that severely impact the ability for emergency service vehicles to be able to reach certain locations. And that's not okay. And in some instances, there were like lakes in, in the roads. And so I appreciate the consideration of putting this money back in there because it's important that we be able to maintain the roads in a way such that emergency vehicles can access homes when needed.
Supervisor Howard?
Just to clarify, Supervisor Mastin's statement, you said not county roads. You mean not county maintained roads?
Yes.
But they are county.
Yes.
It is county infrastructure.
They're not private roads.
No.
They're not private. They're, they're paper streets, easements. We're not talking about the private roads. We're talking about non-county maintained roads that are paper streets.
Correct. And, and thank you for that clarification, Supervisor Starkey. The, I think this, this is not the first time this issue's come before the board and I think it's the first time this board has discussed this issue. I, and I, and I think if we're going to discuss this issue, we really need the participation of, of our roads superintendent and more importantly, community development department. In an essence, where we can really, the board really needs an idea what we've got lying out there. And we really don't have an inventory or a needs assessment for this type of infrastructure on, in the county and exactly what needs to take place. And so we've been very reluctant, and at least previous boards have been very reluctant to address this issue because of the, potentially the cost, opening up a can of worms. And I would like to hear from our department staff that are most familiar with some of these areas that would potentially be considered before we reallocate those kind of funds to this budget.
Yeah, I actually met with CDD and the roads superintendent and just kind of go through some ideas in which we could utilize that, if, you know, set a criteria, that sort of thing. If you travel down Darby Street, you're, you're going to sink after a rain. And that just, so that would be one example. I'm not sure if you want a list of roads. I did ask, you know, is there a list of non-county maintained roads? That would be somewhat cumbersome for CDD to compile for us. But they, they were more interested in, give them a specific road and they can tell you what to do. In talking with the roads superintendent, none of this is going to be a permanent solution. However, if you do try to go down to Darby, and I do encourage you to try and drive down Darby, you're going to find that it is nearly impossible to pass. So while this isn't a permanent solution by any means, it will definitely improve that ability for the fire personnel and whatnot to, to get to those residents in the event of an emergency. So I'm not sure what you're looking for as far as like a statistical list.
Yep. And to me, again, backing up, this is about getting an idea of what we got out there. So basic inventory. And, and literally, we, we don't have it. I have not seen a basic inventory of what we have as non-county maintained roads since I've served on the board. And in order to really make some sound discussions, especially if we're going to invest in this infrastructure that we have not legitimately invested in, that I'm aware of, we, we really need everything in front of us. And then how do you prioritize where that investment occurs? And, and what you're stating, especially with emergency, that resonates extremely well with me. Because if emergency services can't access an area, to me, that would be something that we would look to fine dollars for, whether it's general fund, force account, whatever that might be, and bump that up to something that should potentially be a county maintained road. But as you brought up. that should potentially be a county maintained road. But as you brought up, I mean, it's not a permanent solution. And maybe we need to be looking at more permanent solutions if it is really that bad. So, um, those are the questions I have. I, sorry to hog the microphone here, Chair.
It's okay.
So I have met with roads because there are several roads in, in my area that have severe need and my constituents have raised them, but also walking that area, it was quite obvious. And they were quite aware of every road that I brought to their attention. And every road was not a county maintained road. And so, um, I know they have a good handle on, uh, what roads are out there and which ones are in the state that they're in. Um, I think that it's, it's, yeah, I agree with you. We need some sort of prioritization of them, but, uh, there clearly is a need and, um, and I have seen it and know that in particularly my district, there are some severe cases of road maintenance needs. And, um, so I'm not sure what you need, Mr. Howard, but, uh, I know that we need to put this money back in because there is a, a need for it. And then maybe we can, uh, take a look at the roads and see some sort of prioritization for them.
I think I just clearly stated my need.
Yeah.
And I don't want to address it in a Band-Aid typed approach either. So if there's a more, um, obviously a list that can be generated, possibly prioritize as Supervisor Starkey has suggested, specific to the emergency type things, and that's how we would go about addressing it. But then, again, this falls back within our general fund purview and how potentially those funds could be allocated or even SB one dollars allocated. We just, I mean, there's just not a lot there, right? And so again, a list prioritized would be extremely helpful for this board to take a more proactive, collective approach, especially if it relates to emergency services. But I think, is that clear enough?
Yes. And I, I also want to add to that is that there's a huge drainage issue in the Birch Track area that needs to be addressed. And that causes for a lot of the issues that we're facing in that area. And so I do believe we need to be looking for, um, funds for an assessment to be done in that particular area because they're going to be ongoing and it, there's a lot of flooding in, um, in yards and, and in that area. And the road, and contributing factor to the roads, um, condition is, is that, um, need for that to be addressed. And it never has been. So maybe in looking at prioritization, we can also take a look at, do we need to go after some funds to do an assessment?
Well, there's, there's, and, and you're making really good observations and, and I appreciate that. And, and maybe this is where community department staff could really help this board out. Because we do have flood control districts which are established and in particular, address drainage issues within Birch Ocean View. I know a lot of that work continued to occur up before, um, Director Perry left, uh, back in the day. But I don't know if it still continues to this day. I know because of obviously our amount of rain, vegetation grows and around here quite quickly and could quickly plug along with beaver activity. And then we have flood control issues within these watercourses. Yet a myriad of environmental concerns to go out there and, and do any kind of flood control these days is almost a nightmare, given the various agencies that have oversight over these areas. So it gets complicated rather quick, but a hundred percent I understand that concern. I just, again, it's, it's really having staff of community development bring us up to speed on some of this.
Anything else before I chime in? Uh, my problem is not with the funds or how many roads we have. My problem is with the plan. That's why none of this money has ever gotten used because the people that proposed it, which Supervisor Berkowitz posed it, it passed the board, the board shoved it up, but, but there was no plan on how to utilize the money. There was no plan. So when you come and say, I would just want to put money in there and make that look good and there's no way to use it, that, we're not in any better shape if we, than not having the money at all. So unless you're going to come, at least in, in my view, unless you're going to come with a plan on how you're going to utilize this money, how you're going, I've heard some pretty good ideas, uh, but how you're going to use this money to fix the problem, I, I don't see any reason to have any money there. That's just my personal perspective.
We'll be happy to, um, work with our staff to develop that and bring it back to you. Be happy to do that.
Well, that, that's the only way that I'm going to be able to buy in is, I, I just can't see putting money there and just have it sitting there. That's what happened. That's what happened for the last three years.
Yeah, just to clarify, Chair, that's, that's the direction that we were given from staff on how to bring this back before the board. So that's, we're, we're just kind of following what staff advised us to do. I've got the email here. So if now, if what you're, you're saying is that you would prefer for us to have a concrete plan and with naming some roads that we would like to use, uh, general fund money to fix, then that's certainly something that Supervisor Mastin and I can do.
Yes.
I'm not necessarily looking for roads that, that you're going to name and name roads. I, I think there needs to be a priority set up in how you determine that that's the road that needs to be fixed, rather than just saying, well, this road looks bad to me, we need to fix it, when there's another road out there that's just as bad and you've decided to fix this road and not that road. So I, there needs to be a comprehensive plan on what you're going to, how you're going to utilize this money. Uh, and, and I, I just can't see it moving forward if you're just going to stick fifty thousand dollars in there we can't use for something else that's earmarked for this and you've got no way to use it.
Yeah, but in historically, why was it put in there to begin with?
Historically, it was put in there as a five thousand dollar, uh, amount for each supervisor. It's district. Well, some districts don't have any, any roads. So
Makes no sense.
So then it just became a twenty-five thousand dollar amount that was put in there per year. And they did that for two years and then nobody used it because nobody had a plan.
Okay, so you're saying though, if we bring forth a plan, then we could access that money?
I'm saying you can bring forth a plan that if the board approves the plan and the money, then there would be a way to use it.
Well, I'm, I'm happy and, and Supervisor Starkey says she's happy to work with staff to come up with something to bring back to the board.
And, and if, if I could add, Chair?
Yeah.
This is, this is part of a, a bigger discussion. Um, and I think Supervisor Starkey and Mastin could appreciate how short-staffed we are in, in our road department. And this is really, I, I, I think it's great that you guys have gone and talked with staff personally, especially Richard. Um, but the reason I really would like to see this, a list in this prioritized is because in years past, when we've heard this, previous superintendents have told me they just literally do not have time to address an additional group of roads that have traditionally not been maintained by the county because there's just limited time. So again, um, having the discussion, discussion of broader context here, seeing what we have out there, how potentially it could be addressed. So it's not a Band-Aid approach. I, again, I like Supervisor Starkey's idea. If it is really truly an emergency piece, that would rise to the top of the list. We could commit the fifty to go out there and try to do the best we can if that's all we could put towards it. But I think having this discussion at a broader platform might be really useful for us, uh, if staff's willing to do so.
Well, and it's not just emergency services. It's just service. It's garbage trucks, it's mail service. It's all these things that vehicles won't, if they can't pass the road. I mean, I understand the issue. I, I understand the issue. I just don't know how you're going to, uh, allocate this money for one road over another road. Give me something, give me something to work with. Tell me why. Tell me why we're going to do a road in my district and not a road in your district or vice versa. Um, you know, that's, that's going to be the, the real question is having some sort of plan. You can, you, and Supervisor Mastin, uh, kind of hit the nail on the head when she said there's a drainage problem. Well, you have a drainage problem, you're not going to fix a road for very long if you have a drainage problem because it's going to be gone in less than a year. So, uh, depending on the, uh, on the rainfall. So, uh, this is not enough money to even start with a drainage plan. Uh, you're not even close. So, I mean, where, where are you going to, where are you going to end up putting this money? Where's this money going to go? That's what I mean by a plan. Let's get something out there where the money can be utilized. Um, and it doesn't necessarily have to, I shouldn't say necessarily. It probably does have to be used by the county road department, but this doesn't mean you can't use a private contractor, um, or that it can't be some sort of a grant program that, uh, that people apply for on a road. And then you can make a determination that way. So I kind of liked that thought. That was brought up by Assistant CAO Hooper. And I kind of liked the, the grant program because then people on that road could apply for a grant, maybe matching funds. Maybe they've got a plan that, uh, hey, I know a guy that's got a grader and he'll come and fix this for three thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or whatever it is. Um, I, I, I don't know how, I don't know how it would work. I haven't seen it because I haven't seen a plan. So, uh, until I, you know, unless I can see something that is going to work, um, it's not something that, uh, that I'm interested in just setting aside money just so I can set aside.
Well, it's good. I'm glad to hear that we do want to have some criteria because it was passed in, in the past and you didn't have a plan. So I think it's good that we have a plan and that there be a way to judge, um, how we're going to use the dollars. And, and I think that's important and, and good for our constituents to be able to see we're being responsible.
So if we could just then table this discussion till a future date?
We can.
Great.
Would the board like to provide some direction to staff to look into this a little bit further and try to develop some kind of a plan or program, maybe even through the Infrastructure Committee? Some kind of a process. Um, and speaking with Heidi, it doesn't sound like there's actually a set inventory of non-county maintained roads that's available. Um, so
Well, it's not, I, I don't think it's just an inventory of the roads because there may be roads out there that have no residences on them at all. So why would we fix a road that there's no residence on? So I, I think just an overall, uh, inventory of roads is not going to really do it. It's going to have to be an inventory of roads that have residents on them that are having issues. Um, I, well, I maybe not even having issues. I don't know what the, you know, like I said, I don't know what the criteria is. Um, and Supervisor Mastin and, uh, and Starkey have initiated this. So if, uh, if the direction to staff is to work with those two, uh, to see what kind of a plan they come up with, then I'm good with that.
Good.
Is that good? Are you guys good with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you okay with that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I just, um, I, how much effort would this, will this take? Heidi, I'm curious. Is our, is this a desk exercise? Is our GIS system updated enough to where you could click a button and pull up this kind of inventory? Or is it really as basic as what Chairman Hemmingson's stating?
Uh, yes. I, I think his, his was an accurate portrayal of what we're looking at. Um, I, I mean, I believe that probably the best bet would be to, uh, get a group of the folks that you listed, you know, the, the recology, someone from the post office, ambulance service, fire folks, all the first responders or, um, maybe even UPS drivers. And maybe have some type of a stakeholder group and establish a list from that. And then we can do comparisons. At least we would have a starting point.
Yep.
What would be a list of all the county, I mean, I'd love to see inventory of what we have, whether it's leading to anything or not. I'm curious how, I mean, this is, are we talking quite a bit of infrastructure here?
I mean, you're looking at a lot of paper streets that are probably in wetlands. I mean,
Is, is there a way we can do away with those? Is there a way that we can deed them back to the property owners?
Um, there likely is. It would be a process.
Yeah.
It would, it would be kind of fact intensive, but we can definitely look into it. I think it's a good idea to get rid of them.
Yeah, if we could get rid of them, uh, those that are in wetlands that we know are not going to be developable or those that are, you know, not usable, maybe we should, maybe we should start getting rid of some of these paper streets. Because the, the MAP Act or the subdivision MAP Act now doesn't allow that. Isn't that right?
Yeah, well, we have to either accept or reject them
Right.
when the map is recorded. And so these old ones, like Darby's from the twenties when that didn't happen. So
Right.
that's why we have, that's why we have houses built on streets that aren't county maintained.
Right.
Anything up to like what, nineteen seventy-two, I think, could have that situation?
Yeah. Okay. So anyway, it looks like a, a lot of work and I know that staff is short and that's kind of a, a big
But it, yeah, and exactly Supervisor Starkey. I mean, it's, it's probably something that's long overdue to be looked at. I know everybody's short-staffed, but it's, yes, this question comes up year after year and you might as well start.
Well, it's certainly an issue and it, I don't have a problem with addressing it and we need to do something. But I think just putting money there that you don't know how you're going to use it is not the solution. Okay? Are you good? Everybody's good? Direction to staff?
Chair, I have public comment.
Okay.
Give me one moment. Brandon, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hello. It's probably close afternoon now. I'm in amazement. I, I have never seen a couple gentlemen be such an obstacle to take action. What have you guys been doing? There's no plan because you guys aren't doing anything. The county just conducted a county road survey. How did that go? Maybe you could use that. What, we're, we're talking about fifty thousand dollars? That's a drop in the bucket. That could maybe to a couple neighborhoods. Start there. Do something. It's been eight months. I'm still waiting. Mr. Hemmingson, you said you had no insight to my question about Pelican Bay earlier. I believe that you don't have any insight, but I asked you that question six months, six weeks ago. And you don't, no one has anything to say? Just illustrates this board's inability to do anything positive for this community.
Well, I do have, uh
Do something, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Kylie?
Chair, I do not have any more online.
Any other public comment here? Supervisor Mastin, you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say that I have had a conversation with, um, Maguire's staff on the prison and they aren't aware of any closure, but, um, they are going to look into it further and they said they would get back to me on, um, what they can find out regarding the plans for the, the prison locally.
And that's basically what I said is I have no insight. I, I've heard the rumors. I've heard, I've talked. I don't have any information.
Yeah.
Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Director Kunkstall, the, um, a member of the public made a statement that there's a, am I not aware of a road survey or a road plan out? I mean, uh, if there is something out there, I'd love to know, but I'm not aware what, I'm sure you just heard the public comment. Is there something out there I'm not aware of?
I'm unsure what, what he was speaking about. Um, I don't know if there's an opportunity for him to rejoin us to, to explain it. I, I don't know. I mean, we, every, so many years, we do a pavement management, uh, survey of our own roads. Um, there's a regional transportation plan update that happens on a cyclical basis.
Through the donor local transportation?
Yeah, through the Transportation Commission, yeah.
But there's nothing that this, your department has worked on?
I wonder if he's speaking about our SB one project list that recently went to the board.
Yes.
Uh, it could be that, uh, which, yes, we did. That was in May or
Right, which we are allocating funds for and
Yeah, and those are for specific county where projects
Exactly.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Anything else on this? Okay, we're going to move on.
Chair, let me say, um, yeah, I'm clear on the direction as far as staff working with Supervisor Starkey and Mastin to develop some kind of a plan. I don't know what the timeline's going to be involved in that. And so we'll know more about the budget over the next few weeks as far as leading up to the final budget in the end of September. Um, I would recommend that if the fund balance is available there, that we add the funds back if we're not at a, at a final point with the program, just so it's there as a placeholder going forward when we do develop a program. If we don't spend it, we don't spend it. It'd be like the previous couple of years where it just rolls over.
Okay.
But I'll come back with a recommendation on that in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Sounds good. Okay, we're going to move on to item number twenty-three, which is, uh, discuss and give possible direction to the County Auditor Control Perlections Code ninety-one sixty. See as requested by myself, which, uh, we just want to be able to put the information out there on the ballot for, um, the public to know what it's going to cost us if we do or don't have, uh, this. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in. Neil or Joel?
I would just say that this is like a little blurb that'll go in the, the sample ballots.
Yeah.
Say the fiscal impact. And it's something that the board has the option to direct for the elections code.
Okay.
So my only question is that this is just for the blurb that goes in the ballot to show the financial impact? This isn't delaying anything? Everybody still gets a chance to vote on it?
Yeah, and in fact, this is kind of late in the game. Rand Hoop and I discussed it maybe a week or so ago. Hopefully, the auditor knows is on board. I don't see him, but I think it has to get to at least, maybe in a week.
Yeah, there's like eighty-eight days before the election.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So it's not going to delay anything.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Yes.
The auditor is online, if you guys had any questions for him.
Clint, you got anything to say? You're willing to do it?
Yeah, I am willing to do it, not a problem. I just heard about it last week or so. It's something that the board wants to do. I, non-issue, we're in.
Okay. Okay, so with that, with consensus, you got some public comments?
Do you need an actual vote, or do you use consensus?
You got some more public comment?
I do.
Okay, let's hear that.
Brandon, you are on, you just need to unmute your mic.
I, I just request that an impartial comment be posted on the ballot. All we've heard from county council and county administration and new board of supervisors is how it will impact the county employees. And they are not the only residents of Del Norte County. I request that you also survey local businesses and industry to see how, measure R is what I'm sure we're talking about, how that affects local business. So I think it should be an impartial statement.
Okay, are you done? Yes, it has to be impartial, it is information only.
Chair, that is all I had online.
Okay, so with consensus, is that good? Do we need a motion? Consensus to give direction?
Yeah, I mean, consensus is Brown Act sufficient.
Okay.
You know.
Right on. So that is the direction. Clint, you're on. Go for it. Kylie, I know I jumped around a lot, so I don't know if I got everything, but I think I did.
Yes, we're good.
Right on. So with that, we are, if anybody got anything else, board members? We are adjourned, next meeting is August twenty-third, see you there.